Nine Lowell Planning Board meeting. Tonight, we have a one public hearing on for 135 Beacon Street, and we have a couple of matters under old business. If the board doesn't mind, I'd like to take the -- wave the order of agenda and pick up a couple of matters that are small for old business. There's no objections? Hearing none. Under old business, I'd like to entertain the matter for the site plan and special permit review of 76 AD Rogers Street. This is the Old Mother Hubbard project. This is a matter that the boards have been working on for quite some time now, and we've been out there and we've visited on several occasions and tried to make improvements to the site and to make the project a better project for the city of Lowell. For this matter, the Lowell Planning Board will review completion of work proposed to bring the structure and site back to a standard conforming to the approved plan in the special permit. The project required special permit and also site plan under Section 11.4 of the zoning board ordinance, excuse me. The board issued a conditional approval for both matters during the meeting that was held on 6/4/2007. May we hear from the applicant, please, at this time?
Good evening. My name's David Gray. I represent the site at Old Mother Hubbard, 76 AD Rogers Street. I just wanted to -- I've been working with Aaron on this for a few -- for months now, and we -- I think we've come up with a good plan to address the board's concerns. We've implemented those concerns with the different designs and the construction with the fronts and landscaping and things like that. But everything is complete now, and I think Aaron's been out to the site to take a look at, and I believe you have pictures of that in your packet.
Aaron, do you have any comment over Mr. Gray said, or if not, I'll turn it over to the board members. So anything further you want to comment on, any communication that I know you've received quite a bit in our packet this month and also last -- I mean, the last meeting as well?
Yeah, I think David pretty much covered everything. We've been communicating for quite some time back and forth, talking about the different elements that the board had agreed to with the applicant and that needed to be brought up to the special permit approval. And I took a drive by there last week or so to get some final images, which hopefully got out to you guys. But it looks to me that he's -- or the applicant has addressed the outstanding questions that the board had.
They have enhanced the project also, the different designs. You know, we see it after those porticoes. I mean, it does enhance the site with the recommendations you guys had.
Any of the board members have any question?
I have none.
Yes, Mr. General.
Mr. Gray, it's your intention to model that on the new developments that go down along the side street there across from --
Yep, yes.
I think, I think, you know, still a little disappointed in the -- how we got to this point, obviously, but I think what you've done is a reasonable compromise. I think you've made a significant effort to try to remedy the situations that could be remedied, so I'm satisfied with the -- I think it looks better.
Thank you.
Definitely looks better. I like the --
You guys have been helpful too. We appreciate your understanding and patience.
Thanks for working with us, so I'm satisfied with the compromise.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
Jim, I'm satisfied with it too. I think what you've done is really enhanced the project. I drove by it the other day. I just have a question about the Hooper netting factory sign, which used to be a long time ago. Is that -- it's hard to see where that is in the picture that's been provided.
It's underneath the bump out. It's --
Yeah, it's in the underside, yeah.
We cut out a mulch bed.
On the side?
Yes, on the side. It's right on -- as you're going down Perry Street, that's on the corner somewhat, but it's faces out a little bit angled towards Rogers.
All right.
We cut out a mulch bed underneath there, and we put a footing and attached that sign to a base stand.
Okay, and it's at a height where it --
It's on a granite. It's on two granite pieces at each end.
Okay, that's fine. It's just hard to say, David. Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Plamont?
I have none.
None. Mr. Jerry? Okay, you have no further comments from the board? Mr. Wee, pleasure the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the revisions that have been made to the plan and as satisfying the amended conditions in order to address the deficiencies from the original plan.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. The matter has been accepted as approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Moving back to the order of agenda, our public hearing, we have one public hearing tonight, as indicated earlier. This is 135 Beacon Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Daly Realty Trust for site plan review and neighborhood character special permit for a project being proposed for the above address. The project proposal includes the rehabilitation of the existing two-family building on-site and raising a portion of the existing building along Third Street. Two new residential buildings are proposed. One is a two-family duplex, which is located on 11,375 square foot of land parcel, providing six parking spaces, and one single-family residential building on 6,232 square foot lot with two parking spaces. May we hear the case for the applicant, please?
My name is David Daly. I'm the principal of the Daly Group and Daly General Contracting. Been doing renovations and general contracting in the city for well over 10 years now, and I've been before the board before. We acquired this property, 135 Beacon Street, in June -- sorry, May of '09. It sat at the time, there was a two-family, probably built in, we figured, estimated to be in the 1800s, an old mansard-type building. It was built in, like we said, it was an old estate for maybe what we assumed was an old mill owner. At some point, they'd attached a garage in a ramshackle-style, single-family. So our plan at the time was sitting on a 27,000-square-foot lot under Form A rules, it was allowed us to subdivide the property into a single-family lot and a duplex lot. In June of '09, we did such. Over the course of the last six months, we have been working on the existing two-family and the actual property itself. The two-family obviously was in dis -- you know, was in disarray, and we did a significant amount of work, investing over about $150,000 into the outside and inside of the structure. We repainted the building, sanded it all down, we put in a new roof, new deck, and did a significant amount of work to the inside and brought it back to life. In the meantime, the original mansard is the one we salvaged. We went through the process and had the additions of the garage and the old single-family raised, at which time, we've also done some grading and to allow for the proper new driveways that were -- we actually changed one of the driveways and added another one so that we'd -- even though the one driver would allow for proper parking per the code, we didn't want to have any hindrance on the neighbors with any parking issues there, so we put another parking spot in the back. We put -- and we also set up using, you know, some of these newer-type walls that are cheaper. Yeah, I actually commissioned an architectural-style building company to build a fieldstone wall out of the actual fieldstone on the site, taking into consideration the use of the materials on-site. We've also gone ahead and designed some architectural plans, which you may, you should have in front of you, for the single-family lot, which is known as Lot -- I don't know, is C or A? I think it's A. It's going to encompass about an 1,800-square-foot single-family home with its garage as well. We took the lots and we tried to mimic the neighborhood. The current two-family that I just addressed sits on 11,000-square-foot lot. That was -- that's known as Lot B. The gentleman across the street on the opposite corner sits on about a 10,000-square-foot lot. The single-family was subdivided into about a 6,200-square-foot lot. We not only addressed the zoning code for open space and green space, but we've almost doubled it in many of the circumstances. The surrounding area is filled with some multifamily homes and duplexes, some single-families, and we tried to mimic the same type of style of houses and also the size of the lots. The duplex lot is going to sit on a 11,000-square-foot lot and have a significant amount of green space in the back, parking in the back, to address the city regulations. Again, we, you know, asked for the board's review. I also look for input from the city, the people that live up there. I can imagine they're going to have some comments, and I appreciate them coming here tonight to bring forth any of the comments they might have, and I look forward to addressing all of them.
Yes, please. Mr. Daly, do you have anybody else who's presently with you, with the applicant, and wants to speak on behalf of the project?
My engineer.
For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. I'm the project engineer for this project. I think Dave basically summarized the majority of this project. I would like to note, I think early on in this process, Dave met with Aaron on this to look at the site, try to come up with some ideas as far as parking and ways of trying to reduce site drainage for this project. So you'll notice on the proposed two-family property and the single-family, we're proposing on the single-family property, the driveway to be eco-stone permeable pavers. The city Lowell has requirements now with drainage discharging out into the city system. With these permeable pavers, it'll allow stormwater runoff to infiltrate between the permeable pavers and recharge the ground underneath. On the two-family dwelling, the rear parking area behind the building will consist of permeable pavers. We've also added a buffer along -- landscape buffer along each lot line of the two-family and the single-family that will be pine trees. I believe they're spaced 10 to 12 feet as a buffer. And as Dave also stated, there's no zoning relief required from this. We have a dimensional table showing all the setback requirements. Each house will be serviced by municipal water, municipal sewer. All that information is shown on this plan. I have received department comments and some of Aaron's comments, and I'm sure Aaron will read some of those into the record tonight, so I think at this time, I'll turn it back to the board for any questions.
Let me just ask you, Mr. Sullivan, did you receive, excuse me, the comments from Aaron that was dated July 30th? No, excuse me, September 30th. My apologies.
Which one was that?
The one that was addressed to myself and the board members.
Regarding builder, dated September 29th?
February September 30th. It was CC2, Mr. Daly and Mr. Sullivan.
What is the number of -- Aaron and I have been back and forth --
They're the same -- they're basically the same memo, except one got spell-checked.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, I'm looking, I think I believe, is it the document regarding building architecture?
Yes. Did you touch base on that?
Yes.
So maybe save us a couple of questions.
I've addressed, and I will go through line item with the board if you'd like.
Sure, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Regarding building architecture, I'm very much into -- you may or may not have seen some of my properties that I've built. I'm very much into detail. Many of the newer projects don't feature, regarding question one, don't feature full returns and box returns, which I'm a huge fan of. They weren't listed in the kind of -- in the elevations that were provided by the architect, but we do -- we do intend to put the box returns in full instead of a straight return. We're going to do the box returns. As far as regarding the horizontal cornice porch entryway, we had done this duplex in other places, and we had done an arched portico. Aaron had just suggested do like a shed-type dormer portico, i.e. front entrance, to kind of mimic a mirror that a lot of the surrounding homes have that more of a shed dormer. To be honest with you, it's a lot cheaper for me to do if the board decides they like it that way. I personally like the arched portico, but if it's going to mirror the local design of the character of the neighborhood, I have no problem doing that. Regarding number three, I think we had put in an oval window above the porch. The only reason we did that is that's a closet behind there, so obviously, we can get -- we can put in a window that is like a square rectangle to kind of match that, like a box-type window, roll-out windows, wouldn't be an issue. Regarding question number four, we had gone over a couple of different designs. I've built this duplex before in similar duplexes, but we always kind of change them up a little bit. Jim had decided, the architect, who, just by note, by the way, Jim Gezokas is not only the architect, he hails from Lowell, he hails from the Christian Hill neighborhood, such as I, so it's not like we're out-of-town developers and architects throwing something in someone's neighborhood that we don't have to stare at every day ourselves. So Jim had actually came up with a design to have two separate entrances, and somehow that got put on, that gets sent at one point to the engineer, so that change was never made, that it's actually going to have, we're going to still have that one main entrance as indicated on this plan, this duplex plan here.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify that? Are you saying that the -- you're talking about the driveway entrance or the --
No, I'm actually talking, sorry about that. The main walkway on this plan here, on the new duplex
Yes.
Will show one walkway.
I see.
On the plan you guys have, I believe, it shows two different walkways. We're going to have that one walkway. Regarding materials, number five, I guess we're going to have to work with the board with this, and I've done this before. I can sit here and go on and on about materials, but also, it depends on where I do the project. Many times, we use siding, many times, hardy plank, many times, like a vinyl shake. I'll do a cultured stone, I'll do real stone, and I'd have to probably more work, do some more work with Aaron to kind of bounce some things off him with as far as detail, because I can go on and on, and we can, the board, go on and on about detail. But we do, I've got to be honest with you, probably do intend to do, because most of the neighborhood, some of the neighborhood in the area have a lot of this vinyl siding, so we do a vinyl siding, but a nice corner with a recessed panel potentially or an AZX side corner. Again, we already talked about the box returns, and as far as cornice details, we could talk about that, because many different designs we could go into. Regarding number six, and the column, it says it shows one. I have no problem putting two columns up on that porch. Regarding finally number seven, there's a -- the good news is there's a million different type of garage door manufacturers that have now made it much more economically friendly to put a nice door in that you don't have to, to have some type of character to it without the classical steel door and allow for some type of, you know, architecturally-friendly-looking garage door. So again, there's a myriad of designs out there. I've used plenty myself, so I didn't bring any actual designs with me to kind of reference the board, but I could work with Aaron on that. Regarding number eight, we had put that bulb in, in the parking spaces to allow for that, maybe that third car, should you have a third party. Aaron had requested potentially to remove that, so if that's the will of the board, it's, again, it's no problem to us. Regarding number nine, we actually shortened the driveway on one of them, and the reason why we did it, there was a huge tree underneath there. We had to remove the tree, and the root had grown all the way under that driveway, so we ended up having to rip it up, ended up regrading it and redoing the driveway. The driveway that was submitted, the both driveway plans that was submitted and approved by the city engineer regarding this existing duplex, that's what it was approved by them is what's actually at the site. I wasn't able to get a copy of the plan we submitted, which it actually mimics a plan. I don't know if I believe you guys have that. And it's, I'd have to look at which one you have. And it's just, it's a shorter driveway on the Beacon Street side and a longer, narrower driveway behind the existing two-family.
Sure, thank you.
It's a shorter driveway and a drive-in in the back.
Okay. Cool, okay.
As indicated regarding number nine, there was a couple large pine trees, two of which were right in the middle of where we were going to do some, where we put the proposed houses. Another one was, the root was growing underneath the driveway and the proposed walkway, so we'd have to, we had to get rid of it. We kept all the perimeter trees, though, any type of perimeter brushes as much as we could to keep up a natural boundary between the property lines. Regarding number 11, we had proposed nine-foot-wide parking spaces. Aaron said the code, to make them wider, the code is actually eight, which is fine. We just had the room to work with, which is many times not the case, so we made them wider, but if he'd like eight-foot-wide parking spaces, we don't have an issue with that. Regarding number 12 and the engineer's comments regarding the walkway along Third Street, again, again, it's something that we don't have an issue with, and we look forward to bringing that all the way down Third Street. And then number 13, the lead certification, as he said, I'm actually not mandated to do such, but all the projects I do have significant greens, green pieces to them. Instead of a two-by-four exterior wall, which is actual, the code, I do two-by-six. I use an expanded value on the windows. I also do a thicker insulation on the two-by-six walls. We do the, at least the 95% efficient heating systems. As Jack had mentioned already earlier, we're doing some flow-through type pavers instead of driveways to lessen the impact on the runoff into the city. And there's a number of things that we do for, you know, green building techniques that, although not mandated, we do on our own. I think that's it regarding, I went through, the conservation department had no comments. The building department had no comments. The board of health had no comments. The water utility just said that, and we're aware of this, we just need separate water services for that duplex, which we do. Waste water had no comments. Jeffrey Gomes from transportation, he addressed that, comment number 13 regarding the sidewalks, which we will plan to do. And Captain Weber from the fire department had no comments as well.
At this point in time, anybody here like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none, this portion of the public hearing is closed. Would anybody like to speak in opposition? If you'd like to speak in opposition, just please come to the microphone, sign in, and please give us your name and address, if you would, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Cronin, and I live at 244 Third Street, and a lot of us neighbors are here tonight, and we're new to this. And I wonder if you could explain Section 11.4 and Section 9.4 to us?
The waiver of technical compliances? 11.49?
This is 11.4 in a special permit under Section 9.4. Requires a site plan review.
Right, that's 11.4, yep. That's site plan, okay.
Right, in Section 9.4. Why do they need a special permit under Section 9.4?
I could probably help with that, if you'd like, Chairman.
Sure, go ahead, Aaron. I'm going to pick them up. Go ahead.
That's the neighborhood character special permit in most of the traditional and urban residential zoning districts. In the case, there's an existing building where an applicant is adding, I think it's two, actually, two units, and they're adding an additional unit or more.
You mean this one?
Where there's an existing one or two family residents or more, and there's a proposal for additional units, that triggers what's called the neighborhood character special permit review. It's a very specific design review for these kinds of projects to make sure that the proposed buildings or additions to the buildings fit into the, you know, quote-unquote "character" of the neighborhood, so that it's not an unreasonable departure from the scale, massing, and architectural details of the buildings. That's why often in these, this is maybe me editorializing, but that's often why in this kind of review, you'll get a very detailed discussion about architectural elements. This, the 11.4 is site plan review. Whenever a project is required to go under 9.4, which is the neighborhood character special permit, it automatically triggers site plan review, which is more of a review of the development of the entire site.
All right. You said it changes the character of the neighborhood?
No, no. It's a review to make sure that the proposed development is in accord with the character of the neighborhood.
Well, Third Street, we call it Little Third Street, from Beacon to Lowell, those are all single-family homes, and we're now going to get a duplex there, and I'm not in favor. That's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Judy Lanthia. I've lived on Little Third for approximately 44 years, and I'm an abutting property, the whole length of the property. I don't quite understand the orientation of everything that is going on.
You can address us, please, ma'am, because we can't hear you when you face them.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't understand the orientation of the existing property.
Okay.
And then where the two-family is going to go, and where the one-family is going to go, and where all the driveways are going to go.
There's a plan there. What happens is, as board members
We can't see that.
Okay. As board members, we get a copy in advance. Also, when it was advertised twice in the paper, if anybody had a question, they could come down and look at the plans as well prior to tonight's meeting.
Right.
So you could come in, take a look at it.
Okay.
Basically, we get the plans in advance, and what I asked Mr. Daly to do is, every time we get a copy of the plans, we have to have all the city departments review them. That's why I had him review all the notes that were given to us, raising certain questions to address them. So on that plan, what he has is the existing two-family home, which is on the corner of Beacon Street and Third. What he wants to do is put in the two-family behind on Third Street and then put in the single-family that's proposed on Beacon Street. What he indicated at the beginning of this -- What he indicated at the beginning of his presentation is, this is what he is required to, he is allowed to do by right under our zoning regulations. He is allowed to have a two-family there and he is allowed to have a single-family there. So we cannot stop him from putting the two-family there if the zoning code allows him to do so in this use, which is known as it is the, put the two-family in there for that zone. So basically, what we have to do on the site plan is to make sure that he meets all the criteria for side yard, the parking, the frontage, make sure he has existing parking spaces, and that's where we have it seen by our engineer, the water department, make sure he ties into everything properly, make sure he, in conforming with all our regulations. On his plan, in a copy that we get, is every time they show us a plan, what we make him do is put in the table of requirements up in the top right corner, and he has to show us what he's proposing and what is required. And if he doesn't meet that criteria, we have to ask him what he is missing. So on the criteria he has here, we're lot, what is it? The existing lot, I believe, is Lot B, so that's the house that's already there. That's the one that he did the work on, the wood frame structure. So he's proposing to put in the single-family and then he's trying to put in the two-family in the back. Under the zoning, as we pulled up our zoning map, when they change the zoning code, he's allowed now to put in the two units in the back under the zoning requirement that it's in. Now, one special permit, since when the law was changed to give the planning board, as well as the division of plan and development, more critique in these matters is, we ask him to try to make the exterior of these buildings being conforming with what we think would be a special permit, so we can consider what's in the neighborhood. So the question is, when he submitted his narrative to us, he tried, he explained to us that there are houses in the neighborhood that are single-family. There are houses in the neighborhood that are two-family. I know when I was up there yesterday at 5:00, I walked all, well, a good part of Beacon Street and I walked all Third Street, looking at what the houses are in the neighborhood. So under the special permit requirement, he has certain issues that he has to check on, which is, one is the neighborhood character, and then whether it has any environmental issues, whether there's traffic issue, any type of impact, what type of conditions we can put on as a board if he's not conforming, and what the rules are regulating that. So basically, he comes up and he has to do, one, the site plan, to make sure that it meets all the criteria on the site, and then as an added precaution, the city council passed what's known as a special permit to make sure that this building, when it's done, the exterior of it, would look very familiar to what's in the neighborhood now. So then if something up there looks totally, totally out of line, then what will be up there? And in his plans that he submitted to us, he gave us a copy of the exterior of what both buildings would look like. Actually, we've, even we see the copy of a couple of his other projects that he has done on, on other parts of the city and what the exterior is. And that way, we have the right to just, before they can come in and just put the house up, we had no say what the outside looked like. Whether they want to put cement, whether they want to put in siding or anything else, or even the geographics of the house. If they want to put a big A-frame, put a big point up, we had no control of that. So under the special permit now, we have the right to say, we want this, these new pieces of property to look what's the existing neighborhood. So that's where the special permit is triggered for the neighborhood character, as well as the site plan to make sure that he meets the criteria, that he's far enough away from the road, he has enough parking spaces, he's further enough away from both side yards from the abutters and the rear yard. So therefore, it comes under two matters that we consider, which will take two votes from us tonight. The special permit needs four out of five votes, where the, where the site plan just needs the three out of the five vote. So we have all that criteria that we have to consider when he comes in before us tonight, so he needs both of those votes to get a favorable reply on these matters. Hope that answered some of it for you.
Well-
There's a lot that we have to read and digest. There's a lot that we have to go over, believe me.
I really don't know what you just said.
So by right, he has the right to put the two-family and the single-family in by what the zoning code says.
Oh, absolutely. I know he has enough square footage, I understand that.
Yeah, and that's what we look at.
Their street zone for single-family and Beacon Street zone, including that little piece that comes down, is owned for traditional two-family. I understand that, but in all the years that I've been there, the only building which they raised, which, they took that building down in the beginning of June, that was a single-family.
Okay.
Because I lived in that portion for a number of years, but that was a single-family. So putting a duplex there changes my street. Regardless of what he puts on the exterior of the building, it changes the look of my neighborhood. The two-families are on Beacon Street, they're old houses, they've been there. The two, the house that he's renovated, I like the color.
It's nice, I was looking in the windows yesterday.
Yeah, I mean, I like the color, but, but that house was, was a two-family and obviously is a two-family. How is that gonna be marketed?
That we have no control of.
Okay.
We just have-
Is it condos?
What we have, we have no control of how the ownership goes. We just control what the building can look like.
Can look like.
Right. So he wants to do, he can answer that and we can ask him that in a minute. If you'd like us to, we will.
And, okay, so I guess my questions, and I don't know if anybody else has.
But basically, you can address them towards us, and then what we usually do, if we have the questions, we'll bring it back to Mr. Daley, because part of the hearing is, you're supposed to give us reasons why you're in favor or why you're not in favor, and then we have to make sure that those reasons that you give us meet the conditions of the zoning. So even if I don't like something going up next to me, if it meets the criteria in the zoning and we say no, it goes to court, we lose. We've been there. We've done it on Hillier Street.
Pardon me?
We've been there, we've done that, and we lost on Hillier Street.
On Hillier Street?
Sure have.
Okay. Six parking spots, is that zone, is that, is that-
That's what he needs for the two-family, right, exactly.
You need one?
And actually, what he wanted to do is, he wanted to make the parking spaces bigger to give more room back there, and our associate from planning and development says they don't have to be that wide, but he says, I'd rather make them wider, so if someone wants-
They need three parking spots for a two-family house? They need six parking spots?
Three per house, correct.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
It's not one and a half?
Nope. He needs three per side, so he has the six. Right, is that what he has? Right. So for that two-family, one side is entitled to three under the zone and the other side is entitled to three. So he has the two parking spaces. On his code here, he shows us under Lot A and under Lot C, and it breaks down, and then we have the parking requirement.
How much access, how many driveways are gonna outlet onto Third Street?
You'll have one, one driveway per, well, he'll have one on this single-family, and I think he, and, what's it? So he has, okay, he'll have one driveway on Third Street.
One driveway? Not three?
Two. One on each side of the two-family house.
There'll be three?
Not on Third Street, no. Two. Two on Third Street, one on Beacon.
So there's gonna be-
So here's the, you want to show him the plan, Mr. Daley?
It's not a house, it's just plot plan.
Can you show Mr. Sullivan where the driveways would be?
Let me just correct. For the proposed two-family, there'll be two curb cuts.
Okay.
For the existing house, there'll be one. So there is a total of three driveways on Third Street now.
Oh, okay.
I was just looking at the proposed two-family, but if you look at the existing house, so there'll be a total of three driveways on Third Street, there'll be a total of two on Beacon Street. One for the single-family and Dave's gonna retain the existing driveway that's for the house he just converted to the two-family.
That's the one you shot.
That's correct.
That's the driveway you shot. And then the architectural retaining wall that you use, these stones from the site work, there's a driveway there and that's for the two-family?
Yes.
That's for the existing two-family. And then there's gonna be two, is that gonna wrap around?
No.
Just goes in and stops, right?
How are they gonna get to the back? I mean, this parking lot, the six-family parking lot, the house is gonna be here, then there's gonna be a driveway alongside each.
Right.
And that's gonna connect to a six-car parking?
In the rear, correct.
In, in the rear.
Right.
So how does, how do those two driveways get to it? There's gonna be one ways-
They reach, they reach the back of the property.
Sorry?
They reach the back of the property. So what he's doing, he's putting the parking behind the house. A lot of times, people put it in front of the house, which he can do too. But he decides to put the parking way off the street and put it behind the house. A lot of times, he could have put the parking right in front of the property on Third Street, but he decided to put it in the rear.
Okay.
Which is usually nice-looking, particularly if you're in the neighborhood.
I'm sorry?
Usually having it in the rear is nicer for the neighborhood. Sometimes, so he decided to put it in the back. So he would have, both driveways will come in this way and they're both accessed-
And it's gonna go alongside my driveway and then be on a portion of my backyard. Is there gonna be yardage back there? It seems like an awful small area to put three-
Is there gonna be what?
It's a small area to put in all that much.
I think the plan is about 2,600 square feet of open space behind the parking.
And that would be shared between the house on Beacon Street and-
No, it's just for the two-family.
It's actually 2,600. Yeah, that's what he said.
So past the parking, he has another 2,600, 2,300 square feet past where the parking is of open land. So part of our requirement is, we encourage open space. So what he put on that plan was 2,632 plus or minus square feet of open space behind the parking on Lot C. And on Beacon Street, where that single-family is, behind that, he's having open space as well, which is 1,494 square feet as well. So he has, behind that house, he has a lot of open space as well, which is one of the things that we definitely encourage.
Right, and just to add to that, on the single-family, we're providing about three times what the minimum open space requirement is and close, a little over two and a half times on the proposed two-family. So we're not just meeting the minimum requirements, we're exceeding them by a good amount.
I'm still opposed to a two-family being there, but this meeting can't rectify that because they are zoned for that, even though the character of the neighborhood is gonna change with a duplex being put in there, regardless. Are you?
All right, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your input. Anybody else like to speak?
Wait.
Yes, go ahead. Just state your name and address, if you would, sir.
My name is Arthur Perkins. I live at 249 Third Street. I'm in opposition to this plan. Even, even though we, nothing can be done about the two-family historically, as been stated before. It's, it has historically been a single-family residence, has been there, as far as changing the character of the neighborhood. I dare you to find any pine trees in the neighborhood. I very much dislike the idea of having pine trees planted next to my property as far as windstorms in 15 years knocking them down onto me. Pine trees have very shallow roots. I don't like that at all. I would like to say that they've been doing a fine job as far as the construction and I'm not in opposition to the property being developed. A two-family home would traditionally be something that would be rented and a single-family would, something that would be bought. I would be much more in favor of people investing in the neighborhood. I'm disappointed to hear that there's nothing that can be done as far as a community standpoint other than the look of the property. Government being what it is and laws. That's about it. I'd also like to make a note that I see many, many people from the neighborhood here and none of them, none of them stood in being for this, or being for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Pat Hunt from the Central Neighborhood Action Group. I just have a few questions. Do we know the total square footage of all that land, including what's there, the entire, the entire plot?
You talking, counting the existing ones?
Everything, everything that's there.
All right, well, on, let's see. 27,900?
Okay.
27,000, zero.
Oh, okay, great.
Because he has, let's see, what do you have? We have 11,375.
Yeah, that's-
And that's where he, he needs 6,000, so he has almost doubled on Lot C, so he's almost double. Lot B, he has 9,412, where he needs 6,000, so he meets that by. And then on Lot A, he has, he has over 6,232 square feet, so he meets all of the lotage requirements.
Okay, and my second question is, parking for the, the existing two-family, how many spaces of parking are gonna be for that?
The one that's there now?
Yes.
Okay. That's not before us, but I'm sure he can answer that.
Oh, okay.
Because I was up there yesterday, so I know he has more than that total.
We virtually tripled it and, you know, obviously, right now, the city, I'll address a couple of questions.
If you could just stand up so that they can pick it up at home, because they don't always catch it here. Steve, do we have a mic there we can give them, maybe? Or do you want to take one of these mics here? What happens is, at home, a lot of times, people don't pick it up, who are watching for the neighborhood. Or if he wants to answer from there, it's fine.
We actually virtually tripled it. We put on the Beacon Street side, we can park four cars, which is the code, and then we were able to park at least another four cars on the Third Street side. The reason why we did this is, the constant complaint in the city now is off-street parking. So we didn't want to burden the neighborhood with cars on, on the sides hanging on curbs, so that's what we did. As far as the comment too regarding the sale and investing in the neighborhood, I believe with what the gentleman just said, those, that duplex will be sold as condos. Well, that's good or bad, it's not gonna be rented out, it's not gonna be rented. And as far as the existing two-family, it is currently under agreement to be sold to one family as a single-family. It can be, it can be sold as this duplex. So, you know, these are people invested, it's under agreement. The third thing what I want to say is, and what people never take into consideration here, and I understand, I totally understand the frustration here, and I don't blame anyone getting, all, 20 people getting up here and speaking against it. This is their neighborhood, they're gonna have to live with it. I don't live in that exact neighborhood, but I understand their concerns. So I, I'll sit here and I'll address them. Pat and I had paid phone tag, I called there last week, I just want to let you know that and take, try to be proactive, to sit down and try and address their concerns beforehand. I hadn't finalized the final layout of some of the concerns that Aaron and I were dealing with, so we just kind of crossed paths there, but I don't blame them for having some concerns, but again, we're going by the zoning, we tried to double and triple what the zoning code was. So like he said, he doesn't like white pines, and I wouldn't mind sitting down with him and asking him what he would like, so. As far as the other citizens too, I would do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. That answers my questions. My, my concern was parking on the street, because we have a beautiful, beautiful condominium at that corner as well, and in the wintertime, they tend to park right up to the stop sign, where it's quite dangerous. And we're just, I'm just hoping to avoid the same situation on the other side, but thank you to the board and thank you, Mr. Daley. This answers a lot of questions.
We understand your questions. I mean, we always are big on the off-street parking, and I think a lot of it, where we're getting back to the woman I asked you previous, where he's putting the parking in, putting it behind the property is always nicer than putting it in front of the property. Because, like, a lot of houses, as you know, the driveway's in the front. Here, he has the driveway in the front and all the parking's on the back. So aesthetically, looking at it, you'd rather look at the front of a house instead of seeing six cars parked there.
Right. Okay, great, thanks.
And especially if, sometimes those cars aren't being used, they're not being moved, and then it blighted sometimes.
Okay, thanks.
For the architectural view.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Matthew Morabito. I live at 129 Beacon Street and I am the other director of butter. I do have a few concerns as far as, or questions, is if the units are gonna have air conditioning?
Excuse me?
Do you know if the units are going to have air conditioning?
No, I don't know. That's not a criteria that we have to consider, so.
All right, well, the 13 items that Mr. Daley had covered, do those bear any weight? Are those things that he has to meet, or are they just?
Those are things that we consider and then we put the totality of the circumstances together to make an approval.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have to weigh them all out together and then add them up in our minds and see, but these are the things that can be addressed, right.
But strictly made by you, but- But strictly made by you, but not by...
I'm sorry?
Strictly made by you?
Yes, and then, he, he presents it, and we as the board, he's approved the requirement for the special permit and, and all the site plan.
Right.
That's the criteria that we have to adopt, correct.
So if I have any concerns about the project...
You can address it to us, yeah.
All right.
And if we have a question, we'll ask Mr. Daley, right. I mean, for example, if he's gonna put air conditioning, central air in there, one thing, I mean, somebody wants to go and put a AC in their window, do we have control of that? Absolutely not.
I just, if he's putting in central air conditioning, and, and/or I'm sure he's putting in heating, I would like to know where they're going to be vented. If they're gonna be vented towards the open space at the back of the units, or towards the side, towards the two of butter units?
Okay, we can ask on that.
Because the, the sound that comes from them can be quite annoying, where it just runs out like a submarine. Another concern is, the trees that he has left are actually just weed trees. What he tore down were eighty-year-old spruce trees and a hemlock tree, and I'm just curious to know what is, I know he mentioned pine trees, but then he also mentioned that he's left the existing trees in place, but they're just nothing but weed trees. So, I would like to know when and if what will actually go into its place.
Okay.
And when were the plans available for this?
Aaron, do you remember when it was advertised? I know, I know we have to, we make it be done, he has to be two advertisements, how many days prior?
Two weeks prior, there's an advertisement in the Lowell Sun, and then the butters get letters that are mailed out at least two weeks prior to the meeting, and then it's advertised once again one week prior. We usually try to advertise it in the sun the Friday before the, you know, Monday, so it's actually night, I don't think we got it out that early. And the plans are available usually as it's submitted, but typically, people obviously don't know about it until they get the notice, so they're available at the Division of Planning and Development.
And, all right, because I've been into the, the, into City Hall three times trying to get them, I've actually been promised, promised them from Mr. Daley since, I believe, June, and haven't received anything yet, so, if they are available now, I can go down there tomorrow and get a copy if I want.
It's in the Division of Planning and Development.
And they're the real ones.
Right, what we have here, Mr. Clausen gets, and he submits them to the board.
Go to the Division of Planning and Development, it's actually in the JFK Civic Center, above the police department, yeah.
Not in this building, over, yeah. Above the police, to the right of the police station upstairs, right.
Okay, and I am actually not against this project, because I really can't be, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is William Bray, I live at 266 Third Street, been there for almost fifty years, and I've come across a very interesting pamphlet, residential development guidelines for traditional neighborhoods. And I understand Mr. Daley has built several of these duplex homes in the city, and I'm just curious, is this a picture of one of them? Can I show it to Mr. Daley?
Sure.
This is a picture of the home on Acton Street, which he is planning to build on Third Street. I'd just like to pass it to my neighbors.
Okay, so, is that, is, is that what he's proposed to build up there?
Yes.
We're familiar with the projects on Acton Street, I've been inside them and outside of all of them. I've been in with Mr. Daley in the past.
Could I bring it up to you?
Sure, I've seen them, I've been in them, right? Yep, we, we have them, we have the copies, yeah. I've been, when Mr. Daley came in with the first set of those, when we looked at them, I was out on site on Super Bowl Sunday, when the Patriots were playing many years ago, as Mr. Daley recall, and I was there, and I walked through them all, and then he went down the other one, so we do go look prior to, during, and after, right?
This building that he's planning to build is larger than any building on this, on the street on Third Street.
Well, he has to meet certain height requirement.
Two and a half stories.
Right, so he has to meet the height requirement. Okay. So he has two and a half stories, okay. He has to be under that requirement, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Sandra Bindis, I live at seventeen Reservoir Street, and I've been forty-eight years in the neighborhood in November. I also oppose this, again, having grown up here with the character of the neighborhood, looking at the picture and seeing this huge two-and-a-half-story building that's going with all this concrete and six parking spaces, I do not feel that that fits in with the character of the building. And I just have another question, I thought the traditional single-family homes required seven thousand square feet, they don't?
It depends on the zone that the property is, this particular zone requires six thousand.
Six thousand?
Yeah.
Well, once again, I oppose it, I really think it's, you know, one large house on a, on a large piece of property, and somebody trying to get as many houses in as possible to make money. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Kathy Dalton, and I live at 132 Beacon Street, directly across the street from the existing two-family building. And first of all, I'd like to commend Mr. Daley on a lovely job that you've been doing on that property, it's really looking much better than it has in a number of years. My concern is mostly about the parking situation, and I understand that you're saying according to the plans, there are enough parking spaces there, but what's happened is, the convenient parking driveway that existed has been significantly abridged, and an additional parking space is, has been placed behind the existing building. Now, if you look at the entryways of the existing building, that driveway in the back doesn't look all that convenient, and I'm thinking, if I lived there, I'd just park on the street. Well, I don't know if you're as familiar with the intersection of Beacon and Third Street as I am, but I watch every night as I grill my dinner, and people run that stop sign. And with additional parking on Beacon Street near that intersection, I'm quite concerned that it will become a safety issue. I just wanted my thoughts and concerns known, and thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Grandine, I live on Third St, Street 253, I'm gonna add a little bit, because I don't have anything prepared. Mr. Daley, you did a wonderful job on that home, I think it's an excellent paint job they did, made it into more of a decor of the neighborhood. What I think he's presenting for Little Third is taking away from the character of that neighborhood. I've been there for twenty-five years, and by adding this duplex on the Little Third with three driveways, is definitely taken away from the character of the neighborhood. He has taken down some beautiful spruce trees, which, and all the little greenery that we might have left up on that area, has now been taken away. We used to have owls up in that tree, so I'm just trying to relate to it in that way. But I think it's more of a profitable thing for Mr. Daley, but definitely not something we need in our neighborhood, and I'm definitely opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Anybody else in opposition?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I wonder if it would be a good idea to ask if anybody, even if they don't want to speak, would like to put their name on the record as having been here? Does anybody, you know, who's in opposition, doesn't want to get up and speak, but wants to put their name on the record? You can do that. Just give us your name and address, that's all it really takes.
Excuse me, my name is Joe Malu, I live on 138 Llewellyn Street, I've been there for forty years, and this two-family does not sit in with the character of the neighborhood. So, my family and I oppose this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lamash, and I live at 255 Third Street, and what I want to say is, our Little Third Street is like the hidden gem of the city, and this is just changing it all. When you come up Third Street, it just transpires into a whole other neighborhood, and I feel that this development is a housing project stuck at the top of our gateway to our city. The land has been raped, there's nothing left there green-wise, and my major concern is the water runoff now with all those trees gone. This past weekend, we had some pretty heavy rain, and I watched some pretty heavy mud rivers coming down from that property, and that's a major concern for me. And I didn't hear any of that being addressed here. And being downhill, we get to catch everything that comes from up above. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to add an addendum.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
In addition to what the lady was just saying, all the houses in that area are notorious for flooding, and with the removal of all those trees, that's probably gonna be a larger problem. In addition, the driveways that have already been installed, those were paved, and the additional driveways, I believe, were going to be drained through pavers. Are those, are the paved driveways going to be amended? Or the walkways that's already there going to be amended to, to that type of material? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Speak in opposition? Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Hearing none? That portion of public hearing is closed. Before I do turn it over to the other board members, maybe Mr. Daley can just ask a couple of questions that the neighbors have brought up, if you don't mind? Thank you. Like the first gentleman brought up, whether you're gonna do any type of air conditioning, venting on site, can you, with, with your heat, can you address that if need be?
The intention is always to, with new construction, to do HVAC units. Regarding the venting of them, I'd have to look at the framing, how we're gonna run the, the duck work, but if, if, if Matt has issues with the fact that we might be venting them out the sides of the building, I, I don't have an issue with making the venting out the rear of the property, if, if we have the room.
Okay, I know one of the issues came up on a couple of people here on regards to the trees and the landscaping, could you just address that a little bit, if you could? I know they talked about some trees and what type of landscaping, and I know usually, before we approve anything, we make sure that the landscaping is, is approved by our design planner for landscaping, but it's...
You know, unfortunately, at this point, all they see is the land is the way it is right now, is, is, they had an untouched area of property around that existing building for a number of years, and it was actually really nice. And going into developments, I even hate to do such, when we have to do some land clearing, there was eight to ten inches of loom on that site, and in, in the building trades, you need to scrape that down to get to solid materials if we're gonna proceed into the winter months, if we were gonna do any construction. We did have to remove a couple of trees, as a result, we ended up removing three, there were some smaller ones of, of the exact nature, I don't know, but we did try at every corner to maintain the natural barrier of the whole perimeter, where it marries the butters, and so, but secondly, most importantly, as we move forward and we, we end up hopefully developing the land, I think you're just gonna have to trust the fact that they don't know any of my developments. I take great pride in them, and I take great pride in the, the aesthetic appeal of them, so, we're gonna address the green, the landscaping seriously.
Two other questions, I think, just if you could address the water runoff, I know it's difficult now while you're constructing, but once you can finish the structure, and the gentleman mentioned something about how your driveway and your walkway, whether, I think Mr. Sullivan picked up how that water will not go off-site?
Yeah, we're, we're doing something pretty unique, I believe, with the, with the pavers, for the drive, the entirety of the single-family, and also the rear parking area of the duplex, with, it's, 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 it's gonna be a paver-type block that you can park on, but also, it may, it's, it's not impervious, so the water will, will go through and will not run off. The neighbors had, mentioned something about the existing, there was a huge long driveway there that we shortened up and made instead a, a longer, narrower one, so, I don't know if it's six half and one half the dozen, but it's pretty close to the impervious material that was maintained. Secondly, the city, city engineer had made the comments about the impervious pavers that we're gonna put in, so that we don't have any issues with runoff.
So there will no be, there will not be any increased runoff on these sites of existing of what you're developing up there?
Exactly. And regarding the current, we put a silt fence and hay bales around the whole perimeter of the property right now.
That contains water on site now, by doing that?
What's that?
So that contains the water flow?
Yes, yeah.
Right now? Okay. And could you just address the, the height of the two proposed buildings?
They, I've, they will be within the requirements set forth by the TTF zoning, both of which would be under thirty-five feet.
Okay, I think I addressed some of those issues. At this point in time, I'm gonna turn it over to any question to the board members.
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna start with Mr. Lockout, if I could, thank you.
I just, I have a few questions relative to really essentially neighborhood character issues, specifically architectural details, and one is the size of that building. You said thirty-five feet, David?
Yes, it will be with, it will be a little bit low, smaller than thirty-five feet.
All right, how does that compare to the existing?
Well, the, the house directly above it, which I own, is gonna be sold, sits up probably on top of the hill, I mean, probably another thirty, no, no, that's a little bit too much, probably twenty feet higher than that. The elevation, as you go up Third Street, it obviously elevates to a degree. It's also an older house, an old Mansard-type house, so it's, it's really, it's probably a good forty-five feet itself, I would assume it's pretty high up there. So this house will not only sit lower, but also be a smaller building, yeah.
So the, the new house would be, sit lower, isn't it?
Yes, it would be lower.
Just so you can kinda get a better picture of it. My opinion on the portico on that, as opposed to the arch, the other type of gable, is it, would be preferable, because the neighborhood doesn't, you know, I mean, I think that fits the neighborhood better.
So you would advise going with like a shed straight style?
Personally, I would prefer to see that. Let's see, a couple of those here. The chimney on that, the existing house, you gonna repair that at all? It's, presently is discolored, and you can see there's loose brick on it, it looks like it needs to be pointed and repaired.
We, we did re-point some of it, we also re-pointed the foundation and rebuilt the chimneys on top of the house. We actually re-pointed the masonry, some of the masonry on the outside of that chimney that you're referring to. The, the proposed buyers of that, that house right now had an inspection, and the inspector didn't have any issue with that, with the pointing that we did to this point, so, there is some discoloration, it's fading and discolored. I don't know if we can do really much more with that, because of the fact that the thing's more, over a hundred years old, I think.
Agreed, it just kinda attracts from a nice draw.
It does, actually, I...
If you had it coming down Beacon...
Yeah, you can look at the house, and the chimney's just doesn't, doesn't, it's, it's not really appealing to me either.
Right. Relative to the materials you're gonna use on both of these structures, you wouldn't have a problem working with the Department of Planning and Development?
Yeah.
Making those appropriate for the...
For the neighborhood, correct. Yeah.
Okay, that's important, I think. It blends in easier. My other question is relative to landscaping. Is there anything in particular that you're gonna look at for the butters there in terms of trying to dress that up a little bit, or maybe, maybe they get a driveway coming down one side there on the Little Third Street end? coming down one side there on the little Third Street end?
We did note some landscaping, actual detail on some of the plans, but as we move forward with an actual landscaping, a more specific detail, there is, everything is located, that is, is addressed currently on the landscaping, on the actual design right now. Correct?
Okay, and you will work with DPD again there?
You can already see on the existing two-family that we're selling, we graded it out and planted seed, so there's going to be some grass coming in and...
You know, it's really a good opportunity to really dress up that corner with landscaping.
Yep.
I didn't realize until you started building it that there's no, there's no bushes around that.
No.
There's nothing.
We could do that.
So, it's a good opportunity to do that. Let me just see, I have one other thing. Oh, little bump outs on the parking areas?
Yes.
Are they necessary for turnaround?
No. We just put those in, again, to take away any impedance on the area, on the on-street, the current on-street parking issues that may or may not be an issue up there right now. So, it would almost be like an overflow second spot, technically a third spot.
Along off Beacon Street, I can see that.
Right. Aaron did request that those be potentially removed, and again, we don't have an issue with that.
I just, you know, granted, you can drain through those, but if they're not there and you don't need them, then the water's going to go into the ground.
Right.
And it, you know, just to address some drainage issue maybe and, less impervious area, I think would be desirable.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lockout. Mr. Fichette?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, you did a good job explaining the neighborhood character special permit, but I understand there's an awful lot to take in if you're hearing that for the first time. I think the important thing to take out of that is, in the past, a project like this, those were, those are Form A lots. You get those approved, sign off, you get your building permits and you build and people just see it go up. Because of the significance of that particular development and the number of units going up requires a neighborhood character special permit. And I think we'll be able to see how we can at least work that into the process here. We have a couple considerations, site plan review. Just have a couple of questions. On the echo pavers, and I'm somewhat familiar with, I know pervious roadway material requires a special type of maintenance program. Anything like that involved with these pavers or can somebody have a plow come in and plow this or is that? Because I know on pervious surfaces, it's like a vacuum system that comes in, I'm just curious.
Right. That's on some of the applications. There's, there are a number of products out there, the product that, my, actually engineer could probably speak more to that, but there is some, you want to talk about that, Jack?
There's actually different materials we looked at for this project. There's pervious pavement that you see on some of the highways and some of the parking lots that you see on commercial sites. With those types of, with that type of pavement though, you can't sand the surface. If you do sand the surface, then you have to come in with a vacuum truck, so it does get intensive for maintenance. With this type of system, it would, it's almost like if you had a patio in your backyard. I'm not sure you'd want to put salt. Actually, I do have a printout I could hand in to the board.
I just, my concern is if the homeowner doesn't know exactly how to treat that, it could look terrible in a short period of time.
That's right. That's right. What will happen is when Dave, Dave sells a condominium, there's condominium documents, so any sort of maintenance that would have to take place on the pavers, he could put something into the condo docks on that. They're basically maintenance-free. With pavers, there is, you know, they can heave if they're not installed properly in this type of climate, so plowing could, you know, it could be a bit difficult. So, it'll be important when Dave goes to construct these that the proper base is put in and they're put in so you don't get that heaving effect. But I don't think you'd have the sort of maintenance, you wouldn't have to worry about a vacuum truck coming in, anything like that, they're pretty, it's pretty low maintenance.
So, somebody uses a snow blower on this or has somebody plow following?
Should be fine.
Also, on site plan review, the plans that we have on the single-family shows the driveway, if you're facing it, on the right side of the house, but the plans you're showing there on the left side of the house. And I'm just curious as to, did you, what is actually going to be? How is that going to lay out?
We had initially facing the prop, we had it on the left side, as you just mentioned. Then we, once we started looking at the size of the driveway, we realized there's a telephone pole right there. So, we put it on the right side of the, we just kind of flopped the garage.
Just to clarify, the plan that you have right there on the easel is not the way it's going to be. It's going to be on the, well, okay, the color, the color one that you had up earlier?
Right.
Has it flipped?
Correct.
Okay. So, that particular plan that we actually have is correct?
It's correct. The plan you have is correct.
Okay. But on the two-family, on that particular plan, that's not correct because that shows the two porches on either side.
That's correct. So, we're going to have to amend that plan you have for the two-family to make it one inch, one single walkway.
Okay. You know, relative to site plan review, I think, you know, clearly you meet the conditions of the zoning code. As I look at the neighborhood character special permit, I think you would agree, and I, you know, two things, I think, I hope we can, we can get something to work here because I know, Mr. Daley, I'm familiar with your work, I know you're building the house, the building on Stedman Street, which looks fantastic right now. I'm aware, maybe you're not, DPD actually used examples of your work when we looked at rezamping, revamping the zoning code a few years ago in some of the zones regarding design versus density, and you had examples of the right way of doing it. When I look at this and, you know, when I walked around that neighborhood yesterday and I got to tell you, whoever's purchasing that house from you, that's probably one of the best-kept secrets in the city.
Yeah, I do. Blame me, I think I sold it too low. It's really nice.
I really walked that and could appreciate really that particular home and the homes on either side of it. And walking down Third Street, looking at the character of that particular neighborhood and walking Beacon Street, when you look at the zoning map, it is odd. I mean, that's just, it just bumps right out.
Right.
It's the traditional two-family. So, what, you definitely by right have, are able to build a two-family there. I think this is where the neighborhood character special permit comes in, and this is, I can tell you, I was a big advocate of this for the board to have as a tool, is if you look at that existing home that's there, I mean, it really is an estate-type of home. Matter of fact, I thought really looking at it was going to be a single-family estate-type of home. It doesn't look like a two-family.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like a multi-family.
Correct.
And what I would hope is that with your resources, and I'm familiar with this designed home on Acton Street, and matter of fact, I had asked Aaron, that's why we actually had this email to us today to take a look at it. I've actually visited this physically. I would really like to see if you could entertain going back to the drawing board on this and coming up with a design that would be the two-family, but would be more in keeping with the look of a single-family. Because you got to admit, you know, Third Street is not multi-families.
Sure.
And I understand Beacon on certain areas on the opposite side of the street, it's peppered with, you know, matter of fact, you know, seventies, eighties-looking garrisons, a few of them here and there that are duplexes. But this is a great opportunity to really maximize this neighborhood character special permit. Use it for what it was meant for, allow you to develop it with the two-family, but really if you could incorporate something that would look a little bit more like a single-family estate with the two-family. I'm just curious to get your thoughts on that.
Sure. You know, it's kind of twofold. The reason why I had gone with that style, there was a mix and match of styles of homes on the, there's old mansards, there's a craftsman style that's being renovated next door to me, that's, I'm a big craftsman-style builder myself. There's Colonials, like you said, there's garrisons, garrisons, even some splits there. There's a mix and match. And then there's a straight front, you know, forty-style, post-World War II Colonials. And the issue I think, and I agree with you, is literally the property line, my property line splits the TSF versus TTF. So, obviously, they take issue with that. I didn't create that. I just bought something that was on a TTF zone. With that said, you know, I'm open to looking at some other type of architectural renderings. Primarily why I've gone with this design is, A, it's always worked out in most neighborhoods I built it in, and it's been very well-received by the buyers, the actual interior layer as well, it's a good-sized unit and it's an open concept, which is huge these days. And it's easily marketed, so, and so it's also got the characteristic, you know, some character to it, but, you know, I'd be open to evaluating some other types of two-families that might fit the neighborhood better.
I think it's just, it's a great opportunity right now. You know, I think you're looking at what's across the street.
Yep.
You've got two fantastic homes across the street from you too.
Beautiful, yeah.
So, I really think, my recommendation would be to delay and have you come back with another architectural rendering for that structure. And I think it's just a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity for you and to actually show people how this neighborhood character special permit can really work.
Absolutely.
For everybody's benefit.
Like I said, I'm not the one that's going to have to live there, you know, and there's obviously some discontent here and I can sympathize with that. So, I'm not here to stuff anything down anyone's throat.
Yeah. So, that's my thoughts on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Mr. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Daley, you seem like a very professional and conscientious builder. I am not as familiar with your work as my colleague is, but I'm glad to hear. I was going to have the same suggestion as my colleague, that we delay this.
Sure.
And give an opportunity, not for you to go back, not only for you to go back to the drawing board, but to get the neighborhood involved.
I mentioned earlier, I talked, we crossed paths. I have no issues with going, again, we were just, schedule-wise, she was teaching and I was, I have no, no problems with meeting with the neighborhood association. I have no problems with putting us off for two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. I'm not here to cause any concerns. Obviously, these people, you know, are pretty, you know, I like to see the democratic process work, and this is working tonight, and I like to be part of that. And sitting down with these people and saying, what are your concerns? You know, I've heard some of their concerns tonight, I bet you there's more. By right, obviously, I can do what we're potentially proposing tonight, but I don't have an issue with sitting down regarding this duplex, you know, and something that works better architecturally.
I think, I think that would be great. I think, you know, the folks here seem very reasonable. I think if you sat down and heard their concerns and did what you could to address them, I think this whole process would go more smoothly. Couple of things I wanted to say. One of the speakers referred to the neighborhood as the gem of Lowell. You know, I went up there late this afternoon and walked around the neighborhood, took a look at the property, and I must say, you have done a fine job with the building that's there. And I would agree that this is, this is a secret hidden in Centerville over there. As I was there, the sun was just starting to set over the city.
It's beautiful.
It's just a beautiful spot.
Yeah.
And as you walk around the streets there, you can see the pride of ownership in everybody's house. Everybody takes care of that neighborhood. And I'll add one more thing, you know, that's, I think, what makes Lowell unique, different than other urban cities like us. What seems like a hundred years ago, I ran for city council in this city when I was a young Turk, I guess. And I walked all the neighborhoods of the city, and this isn't the only one. There's a lot of little enclaves in our neighborhoods where, you know, you can drive up and down Bridge Street a million times in your lifetime and never know that it exists until you get out there into the neighborhood. And I think protecting those little enclaves of quality neighborhoods is the most important thing we have to do as a city. Because if they cease to exist or if they, the quality in those neighborhoods goes down, people will leave. People that can will leave and our city will go right down the river.
Correct.
So to speak. So, I take it seriously. I know my colleagues take it seriously and I hope the neighborhood realizes that this neighborhood character special permit, as Jerry pointed out, is something that was put in place a few years back, two thousand and four, I believe, just so that we could have this discussion. If it wasn't for that, you know, this, you know, Mr. Daley's put forth a proposal that meets all the zoning requirements, would have to go through site plan, everything he's proposed is legit on a site plan basis, but it's the special, neighborhood character special permit that forces us to have this discussion. If I might just refer to it here, you know, there are some, you could make a case that this project violates it in some places. You know, I'm reading from section eleven dot three dot two, criteria for special permits and table of usages. B says neighborhood character. How does this project protect and enhance the character of the existing neighborhood? Successful projects should reflect the density, the urban design, the setpack's height and landscaping elements of the surrounding buildings. Now, while I know this building is probably lower than the existing one, the existing older dwelling that you renovated, if you look down Third Street, it's going to tower over those other, those other single families that are there. You know, I think that's something that needs to be considered. Another element of this special neighborhood character special permit, traffic access and safety, section D twelve says, how does the project address traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading? Does the project provide adequate parking for visitors? Will the project impact an area with significant on-street parking demand? Will the project require a loss of on-street parking for driveway curb cuts? We're looking now at having three curb cuts there within about an eighty-foot stretch of Third Street, where now there's only one. So, you know, that's an issue that needs to be considered. Another thing under traffic access and safety is, does the project provide adequate and safe pedestrian vehicle access through and around the project? So, you know, there's a number of issues where you could make the case that this project, you know, is on the fringe of not qualifying. But what I would like to see is, you brought out that there is certainly some unrest here tonight. People feel as though the government's not working, and I'd like them to come back feeling like it worked.
I think we can work together and achieve that goal though.
So, like, for instance, some of the things that were brought up tonight, the sidewalks. Mr. Clausen says we should remove the sidewalks. I don't know. Personally, I like to see a sidewalk in a neighborhood. The porticos, you know, we have differing ideas of what the portico should look like. I think the neighbors ought to understand what we mean by that and decide. The bump outs in the driveway, you know, I think I'd rather have a bump out than have another car on the street, personally. What happens if you don't is you get cars parking on the grass so that people can come in and out of the garage without having to move a car. So, and especially given the pavers that you're talking about using.
These are nice.
The neighborhood hasn't seen them, but they're very attractive pavers. And I'm not talking about asphalt driveways here. So, there's a lot that I think can be added if we delay this.
Sure.
Get together with the neighborhood. Centerville Neighborhood Group is terrific and I'm sure they'll organize a meeting so that we can get all this out on the table and come back with a plan that's hopefully stronger.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gentlemen. Mr. Lamarche?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would certainly concur with my colleagues that a delay might be in the best interest of everybody. I think a lot of the anxiety here tonight is based upon the fact that, you know, we've had a few speakers come up and they haven't really seen the plans, they didn't really understand the plans, didn't know how to get the plans, et cetera, and through no fault of anybody as far as that's concerned. But just the opportunity that you may have to meet with them, explain your plans to them and get their input may be helpful. As I look at it, you know, I take some level of comfort. I'm familiar with, you know, the projects that you've put forward in the past and they've always seemed to work out well. And I think that you have an opportunity here to do something nice as well. But when we're talking about the neighborhood character special permit, we need to make a specific finding that the project will enhance the character of the neighborhood, not just fit in. It's got to enhance the character of the neighborhood. That's a strong criteria and even though it may be subjective, that's a burden that you have to overcome. So, as I, as I look at it, just a couple of specific questions. I was looking at the zoning table and the front yard setbacks, I noticed one required twenty, provided nineteen, and on lot C, front yard setback required twenty, provided lot eighteen point four, and those seem to be under. Is that because of the bump out windows?
That's the maximum. I missed the maximum, so I can't go any further than twenty.
Right.
So, that's, I don't, so they don't put garages.
Okay.
That was the intent in the zoning code regulations.
Just, just a thought when you...
Minimum fifteen, maximum twenty, so kind of kept it within that, you know.
Yeah. When you're looking at the plan... When you're looking at the plan, I know a couple of the neighbors commented on the curb cuts that are coming out the Third Street, and on the new two-family, I know you've got two curb cuts for two driveways. You may have an opportunity, if you, and you have a fair amount of usable open space behind that project, you may have an opportunity when you revisit that, to perhaps have just one curb cut, one driveway, shifting all the parking down to one side, the six parking spaces down to one side, and moving the open space between yourself and 249 Third Street. That might provide a little bit more of a buffer between yourself and the neighborhood, and the neighbor, and you could, you know, landscape that area where that second driveway is now. I'm not sure how that would work out for you architecturally, but...
Actually, Aaron and I had kicked that around on one of our meetings. We both would support some form of common driveway to kind of eliminate a curb cut. Again, it's, it looks better, it's aesthetically better, it costs less, I mean, it doesn't have as much as a significant impact on the environment. We just, the issue was the actual zoning, so, you know, it's something that we could look, evaluate again, but it was kinda tough at the time. We were looking at it before, whether or not we could achieve that. I know that the good news is, some of the zoning does allow for common driveways, but this, this had some detriment to it, the way we were trying to achieve it. But we can evaluate that again.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Sure.
Just one further comment I would mention is, Mr. Daley would, is, just basically, when you do speak with the neighbors, is maybe if you could indicate what type of landscaping you'd put between your, the proposed property
Sure.
... and what's existing there. I mean, so, the woman behind on Third Street, she knows, I know you have trees on this plan here. You do have the trees over to the right, where the gentleman had talked about the pines, and you said you'd have no problem changing those.
Yep.
So, if you could talk about those issues when you speak with them. I think, obviously, when you take away a lot of trees at first, it changes the whole complex of the site.
Absolutely.
And then when you build something, then you put the latex tape in back, it takes a little while for it to all fall into place, but you're used to all these trees, overnight they're gone, well, everything changes.
I wish I could have, you know, a crystal ball to see what it's gonna look like.
Here's what it's really gonna look like when it's done.
Exactly.
So, sometimes, you know, when you talk about that, if you have a proposal, like, for the neighborhood character, you know, what type of landscaping you'll deal with, so therefore they know what type of buffer zone they're to have.
Sure.
And I think it makes, as you all know, neighbors say, you know, it looked like this, then overnight, now it's wide open, now, what's the finished part it gonna look like?
Absolutely.
And then people have a little more ease to know what, well, this is what it's supposed to look like, this is what the board agreed to, and that's why when things don't come out as where they do, they come back to us, and we try to make them fit. But I know you have, on this plan, all these trees around the outside, but I think if the neighbors had a chance to look at that and feel like there will be a buffer zone, and then whichever way you wanna set up the landscaping plan, so. So, I have no objections, and if the board wants to put it over for further review, I have no problem with that as well, so.
How much time would you be looking for?
Actually, my first call will probably be to Aaron. I'd like to think that, I've said this, and I made it clear, that you guys, the division of planning development is the best division of planning development, and not just this state, but this country. They're unbelievable guys to work with.
We all agree with that.
So, I'm not kidding, they're unbelievable. So, they offer a lot of good ideas and some feedback. I think my first call is gonna be to Aaron tomorrow, he's probably got some stuff on file that he might have some ideas with. Secondly, we're gonna have to get my architect involved to see what feedback he has. And then we're gonna have to set up a meeting that, you know, addresses the concern, these other concerns as well of the neighbors. I'd rather have it all in one night. Like you said, the fear of the unknown is one of the big problems, Aaron. If I can sit with these neighbors, neighbors in a forum to address their concerns, and that's the best way to do it. So, I, you know, timeframe is not a huge relevance right now. I mean, we won't market these properties until they are, you know, until the planning board approves the actual type of architectural design we're gonna go with, so. When's the next meeting?
Well, we've got, in November, November 2nd, November 16th, and then December 14th.
Think, I'd probably say November 6th, you think November 16th, maybe, or 6th? What do you think? So, October 5th, three weeks?
It'd be about five weeks.
Three weeks should be, it's just that, three weeks?
I think sometimes it's better to give you more time to cooperate everything.
Yeah.
Instead of, I mean, once you get some feedback from some of the neighbors, and you wanna reconsider something, bring it back to them, instead of come back before us, and then, I mean, I have no problem doing it either way, 'cause obviously, we'll be here those evenings, but if you have a realistic point, if you accomplish everything in that shorter period of time, but if we give a specific date, I think the longer, give you more time to cooperate with everybody.
Sure, so we'll say, at this point, November 16th.
You wanna go for November 16th, maybe?
16.
Okay. I mean, we, Aaron, do you have any comment on that?
We have all kinds of resources available right now. It wouldn't take us very long to, you know, pull anything together, so as far as, I'm concerned, it wouldn't take us very long at all to put anything together.
Yeah. I'd also like, obviously, we've heard some concerns here tonight, and I'm gonna at least address all their concerns, but if Pat and I could probably work together in trying to summarize them, the logical ones, to make sure that, and when we're preparing, when I'm preparing for this meeting with the Neighborhood Association and the actual abutters and neighbors, that I'm prepared to address their actual concerns, so that she can summarize if we, obviously, this is, we'll have to talk afterward, summarize some of these, so that we can, you know, move forward in addressing all of them.
All right. Would entertain a motion to continue, then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue to the November 16th meeting for the applicant to meet with DPD and the Centerville Action Group and abutters to address concerns.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Continue, the matter will be continued at November 16th. There'll be no further notices going out, so if anybody else in the neighborhood has any concerns, you can let them know. We'll be back here that evening, as well as hopefully a meeting with the applicant, Mr. Daley. Do you need someone to sit here, you go back to Mr. Daley?
Aaron was just pointing out, we have to do that with the approval of the applicant because of the timeframe, so.
Okay.
We're doing that continuance with your approval?
Yeah. Right now, if we don't mind, can we set it for the 16th? But I have a tendency to move, you know, if we can, I mean, again, timeframe's not a huge issue, it's just that's moving to the middle of November, I've got some dates already for my grand opening for my other, that it's gonna complicate things, potentially. So, if we could set it potentially for the 2nd, and if we can't meet that, we'll know that, and probably next, is that, is that okay? And should I, it's just letting them know. I know that's gonna be the issue, to let the abutters know when it's gonna be. We're not, I'm not trying to hide anything, but I guess we'll work cohesively to try to formulate a firm date.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Daley, I think if the 16th accommodates you, what Aaron is just saying is, we just need for you to assent to that.
No, he's saying he may want November 2nd rather than 16th.
Why don't we say November 16th right now, so it gives everyone some breathing room? I just, I was saying, from my own personal schedule, I have a number of things going on in November, but it gives us all some time to sit back and think about what we wanna do here. November 16th is fine.
We have to do that with your assent, and you'll have to send something to Aaron inviting that you've assented to that.
I have a form for you, I can just, I can...
Yep. Sure.
Thank you. The matter is continued November 16th. Oh, no, for continuation of the, this meeting. If you mind, don't step out, we do have another matter to take up, please. Mr. Daley, if you could just step out, we have another matter to take up, if you would.
Thank you very much. I just wanna move on for our agenda, we have other people waiting to come in. Thank you very much. Moving along, back to the agenda. Moving along, back to the order of the agenda, we're gonna take up old business under 133 Clock Road. The board will review the proponent of the project located at the above address, as listed of site development elements that do not conform to the planning conditions approved by the planning board, when they're granting a special permit. The board will decide what actions or what information shall be presented before the board. Can we hit a case for the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, James Flood, represent the owners of the property, 549 Roger Street Lowell. What I would suggest, as we've done in the past, as we did on Roger Street, is we could set up a site visit with all parties concerned, to go over the situation and see if we can work out some resolution. The sooner the better, and the reason I say that is that, right now, there's a cease and desist on the property, and Mr. McStool, he has spoken with the power company to move the telephone pole, but in order to do that, he's gotta cut into the road to do it, and if it went too far into November, then you can't open the street, so. He's made those arrangements, that's gonna be done, but it's a question of when we can, when we can get together and when the city can agree to let him cut into the road, so.
I personally don't have a problem with the site plan visit. I know we've done it several times in other plans in the past, on what the board feelings are, I have no problem on meeting up there.
I think it makes sense in this case to go look at it.
I don't know what everybody's personal schedule is, I think maybe, I did speak with the applicant, I told her that, you, I mean, I didn't, I mean, I spoke with the neighbor, excuse me, and indicated that that was your request tonight.
Yeah.
And I have a conversation that we had earlier today, so whichever date, if you can coordinate with Aaron, what date's agreeable for you?
Is it, do you wanna do it during the week, or on a weekend, or what?
I'd probably stay during the week if we could.
During the week, early.
All right. How about work time? That's...
What I'd like to do is speak with Ms. Nichols at her side.
She's a teacher, isn't she, who works in the school department?
She leaves at 7:30 in the morning, and she's back at 3:00.
Yeah, so we'd probably have to be...
Yeah, so I'd, so I'd say maybe if we can touch base with all board members, and we can communicate with you and Aaron, and try to pick up some...
Pick a day, sure.
... afternoon, maybe.
Like a 5 o'clock.
That's fine with me.
5 o'clock, if that works.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna try and pick a day now?
So, if you people, I'll, I'll work with Aaron, and you can talk to her and see if everything's all right, and then we'll set it up. The sooner the better, though, when we get started.
I have no problem with it. I'm flexible this week and next week, so.
Okay.
I mean, anything about 5 o'clock, is that, I mean, I know, depends on what day of the week it is.
I can't, this, well, Wednesday, and next Wednesday, I have a problem, but other than that, I'm all right.
So, maybe tentative, I mean, I don't have my calendar be off, but maybe this Thursday to following Thursday, depending what you wanna do, or beginning of next week.
Why don't we have, Jim, why don't you propose some dates to Aaron, and Aaron, if you wanna email them out to all of us?
Yeah, I'll call Aaron tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll do that.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
So, could we just entertain a motion to continue this matter for a site visit, and the site visit date to be determined at a future date by all party's schedule?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The matter's approved. Okay, we'll be in touch. Could you shut that door for a second? Thank you, I appreciate that. Moving along on the new business, we have the election of officers, but before we get to that, if we can just pick up the old business if we can, we can go, if we do the ZBA notices first, if there's no objections. We have a few of them here, I think a lot of them have to do with signs and telecommunications and antennas and the like. These are matters that come before the planning board for a recommendation only to zoning Board of Appeals, and these matters will appear on the agenda October 14th, 2009, at 6:30 PM in the city council chambers. First matter is a special permit for telecommunications, and the applicant is Clear Wireless LLC. This is a property located at 79 East Meadow Road, and his petition is for the co-location of a wireless telecommunications facility to include three panel antennas and two back hall antennas, cables, and associate equipment for Clear Wireless LLC pursuant to Section 7.6 of the zoning ordinance. Wait. Is this the one that already has, up there already, I think?
Yeah, it was a big...
On the end of a telephone pole.
I think we, I think we saw this years ago when it first came in.
It was a real dump.
Yeah. I remember going up there and looking at it, trying to find it the first time.
I took it right up. It's cleaned up now.
I remember going up there the first time, it could be...
Mr. Chairman, I, if I could...
I just wanna add to that, just a poll, so.
If we could get some, into Aaron, if we can get some guidance on these issues, because, matter of fact, this particular, when it came before you, I was, I was at the neighborhood, I was at the head of the neighborhood group.
I remember going up there and looking at it, it wasn't very neat around the area.
But this went to the zoning Board of Appeals, and they denied it, and then it was appealed. It was overturned, and I was shown the decision, it was sent back to the zoning Board of Appeals, was a punishment to show them, they couldn't deny it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that's general.
Yeah, and I, and I just, you know, it's aggravating, 'cause I can tell you, the towns fight this stuff tooth and nail, and I'm scratching my head every time we get these, that come before us.
It's a federal authority, I think.
Yeah, what's it, um...
Yeah, it's just...
I don't think it's the FAA.
I, I don't know, and I really would like additional guidance, and this is, this is an awful spot. Matter of fact, if you look at the fall of that pole, there's actually, I think, a couple homes it could land on.
Oh, yeah.
From this location.
I recall, yeah.
And we, you know, we argued our case, and the zoning Board of Appeals thought it had merit, and, boy, it got, you know, it got sent back to them. I'm just, I'm a little frustrated when I look at these proposals.
Yeah, I agree. It's very unsightly, as it is now, it's on a wooden telephone pole. It's not, it just doesn't appear to be appropriate, and from the application, I mean, we don't have all the information, but it looks like they're trying to do a co-location of three panel antennas and two back hall antennas, cable, and other equipment on this one pole. You'd normally wanna say, yeah, let's co-locate these on a pole, but that doesn't seem to be the appropriate spot for it, so I would...
Probably with a cable on that pole, too. I don't know.
I mean, so with the limited knowledge that we have, we got, so it sounds like they're trying to put a lot on a pole, and maybe we'd have some questions concerning how much can go on the pole, the height of the pole concerning the neighborhood housing nearby?
Right.
Is that what you'd say, Jerry?
Yeah.
I mean, I remember looking at it before.
Yes.
I remember when, I remember when I first went up there, I mean, you know, like, you can see the pole from a distance, and then you're trying to find out how to get there.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, in a more general sense, and I think Mr. Fashett referred to this as well, I feel like I need more guidance on how to deal with these cell phone tower issues, you know? I think the city should have a policy on how we deal with them, and what are our standards about how, you know, these should be allowed in the city, because you're right, I mean, the towns, I mean, they have neighborhood meetings, and the whole town is an upwear, it's all over the paper, when you try to put a cell tower in one of the towns, but they seem to just, you know, throw them and Lowell all over the place, haphazardly, and we just kinda roll over and say, oh, there's nothing we can do about it. But I think there ought to be a policy. I think we should have some type of guideline by which we work, you know, how close should How close should it be to a neighborhood? How many on a pole? You know, do we, do the clients work together so that they can co-locate? You know, I don't know, I don't really know enough about it. All I know is they can be unsightly, and we really don't know the long-term health risks that we're getting into here, because cell phones have only been around for, you know, 15, 20 years. So, you know, we don't want to get ourselves into an issue in that regard either. So, I think you're right, let's, I would like to see it, you know, sent back because of that particular situation, but I'd also like to suggest that we look to the city for some guidance on how we deal with these issues in general.
If I could add to that, too, I think it's not just a city of Lowell issue, it's really a regional issue, and it may be something that NIMCO are going to address, because there's overlapping areas of these from town to town, and, you know, who really has jurisdiction over this? I think it might be something for that group, Jerry.
Aaron, any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I can't give you a, right now, I can't give you a very detailed description of where the boundaries of review, either the planning board or the zoning Board of Appeals, are for their respective reviews. Basically, utili, or, excuse me, well, I'm giving you a little foreshadowing. Cell towers are basically viewed as utility, and that there's a public good that's being served by a well-operating wireless network. So that's what kind of ties our hands a little bit in saying no to cell phone towers. When there's a new tower that is being proposed in a new location, the planning board has the opportunity to comment and review through the site plan review process, and that's what happened at 1400 Gorham Street. But the ability to say no to a particular project is limited by the coverage. If there's, if the cell carrier is able to show that there's an area that is not covered to a minimum standard, whatever that is, the burden is on them to prove that that standard doesn't exist. Frankly, there's not a lot of ability for us to say no on a particular project, is what it comes down to. That said, I believe, and this is where I, my knowledge ends, I know the city, on the law department side, has been doing some work to strengthen our position, at least in particular areas, so I'd have to defer, I know Eric Schlegel's done a lot of work on that front, I'd have to defer to him on what they've done, I know they've worked with a firm called Extonet, and I believe it's an underground hardwire that somehow, this is now, again, beyond my understanding, extends the coverage of existing poles. So having that network in place gives us added control over where new towers are going, but it doesn't cover the whole city, and I don't know where it does. So I can certainly request some information from Eric, maybe we could set up one of the future planning board meetings, maybe it's a joint meeting, I don't know, to talk about where the review and what ability the planning board or the zoning board can say no. Once a tower's in place, I think it's even more difficult, because it's already there. And we've, the ordinance has been written almost to encourage co-location, to prevent the situation where you've got poles going up everywhere. So, as far as the health aspect, the FCC specifically prevents cities from refusing cell towers based on health or perceived health risks. So, that, we can't even use that at all as a criteria for saying no to a project. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of a sense of where we stand. There may be an opportunity, just as a way of partnering with some of these cell tower carriers, and working with them and finding suitable locations, and we've tried that, and we may be able to have some ability to do that in the future. But that's in the case where it's a carrier that's willing to meet with us, and, you know, they're in some ways in the driver's seat, so it, but it's, we just have to be creative. But I'm happy to send out a request to the legal department to really kind of give you a better sense of exactly where those laws are, where mine are drawn.
Yeah, because there must be some criteria that, you know, obviously you can't put it right next to a home or something like that, some sort of criteria that we could at least utilize to say, it just doesn't seem right that it should be here. I think we all agree co-location is the way to go, but on that telephone pole, it doesn't make sense, you know?
Especially a residential neighborhood.
Having said that, I'll make a motion that they deny this request.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second, all that we deny, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair vote, yes. Moving along for the next matter is a special permit for telecommunications. This is Clear Wireless LLC, and this is at 1221 Westford Street, Office Park, the application zoning, and this is for installation of five microwave dishes and the replacement of three existing panel antennas at an existing telecommunications facility for Clear Wireless.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not of a mind to want to have my approval on any of these things, and especially, this is also a congested neighborhood area.
Yeah, kind of similar to the last one we took, but not maybe quite as...
So I will make the motion that we recommend denial.
Okay, so it's a motion to deny this one as well, for some of the same criteria as mentioned at the last discussion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. You go through the application, try and discern what is it trying to do, and it does look like they're also trying to locate on an existing pole, but I don't see any photographs of the existing site.
No, that's...
You can't really tell.
Yeah.
It's too detailed. It's not really a good visual.
So it is a motion to deny it in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair vote, yes.
Yeah. Who made this second?
Jerry. The next two matters, I believe, deal with signs. This one is for special permit, the sign center, this at 300 Batacaet Boulevard, for internally illumination of a wall sign at UMass Lowell Boathouse, according to Section 6.3 of the zoning ordinance. It's a, and the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask if we not make a recommendation on this. I really do think with the internally illuminated signs, that the colors are important as to how that's going to look. I know in that zone, it's allowable, but a little concerned, you know, that's been a little issue that stripped as far as defining the neighborhood, the grand view that's up there, and, you know, the university really deserves to be commended for, you know, as all interested parties looked at, who had the deepest pockets to save this building? It was the university. I'm aware there's some issues with the users now, the multiple users, and that's not going well. But, you know, as it may, they had, they were the only resource that was available to save the building. I am just somewhat concerned about how that's going to look, and I would want to see, you know, input relative to that. That would be my motion, Mr. Chairman, that we would not render a decision.
I know a lot of times on some of these signs, we refer them to design planner and see what they're concerned. I know we've done that with a Miss Tradd, is it still?
Yeah, no, I would add that, yes, Mr. Chairman.
So Mr. Frichetti has made a motion.
I'll second the motion.
And motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair vote, yes, with the motion. Moving along, we have one other sign matter, and this is Barlow Signs, this is for a special permit and variance for signs, and this is at 732 Rogers Street, and this is the regional retail zoning. This is for a special permit for the internally illumination of electronically changeability of the alterations of an existing sign and a variance to exceed the maximum sign size allowed under the Section 6.3 and 2 and 4.
To be consistent, I guess we should just refer this to the design planner as well.
I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, on this one, this is on Rogers Street, which is, in my opinion, one of the worst sections of the street that we have in Lowell, we got to the curve cuts and the signage and everything, and this is an illuminated sign that's going to have electronic changeability, sounds like it's going to be one of those message signs that can be changed, and it's too big.
Yeah, they want to make it bigger than what's required.
Yeah.
I mean...
I just, I would prefer that we, I would maybe make a replacement motion on this one, that we recommend denial on it. I can't imagine being in favor of that.
I'd second that, Mr. Chairman, I just, I have concerns, and I believe the city is looking at the whole sign ordinance, but the fact that they're looking for variance, making it larger, and matter of fact, just the picture that was provided, if you look at the before, you can see the satin sign in the background, and then when you look at the new one, it disappears, so I think, you know, really looking at the effects of all of that, so I would second Mr. Chairman's motion on that.
And I, and also look at the sign there, it looks like it's going to show a vehicle that's for sale. So, you know, that's why they want to change it, so each day they can put up the new vehicle that's for sale. I mean, this one here, right below the Jeep, they show this car for sale, so is it going to keep changing for every car that's for sale there? I mean, we get the idea that this car is for sale there. I mean, that's my feeling, you know? It's like putting each donut and quill about the Dunkin' Donuts, and, you know, what type of coffee you have. I mean, I think it's overkill, what you get, you know, and it, whenever they say to make it bigger than what's existing, makes you think, I mean, like, driving down Route 1, you see all these signs, and after a while, everybody wants to be bigger than the next sign.
The sign is 12 feet high.
I mean, because if you make it, he wants it bigger, the person coming from Tuxbury's is going to want one a little bigger, so his gets seen and blocks out this one, and it has a domino effect.
You assume we get one of those screens like they have at the Dallas Cowboys Stadium, you know?
And we know what happened to that in preseason, even when the new stadium, the roof fell down, remember? So, so there's been a motion to deny it in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion denied. Okay, that completes our review of the zoning Board of Appeals. Moving back, we'll move back to new business. For our annual meeting, we do have the election of officers, pull that matter up. Under our election of officers, we have, for the year to be elected, will be the chairperson, the vice chairperson, second vice chairperson, representative to Northern Middlesex Council of Government, our representative to the historic board, and our representative to the Green Building Commission. I think we might as well just take these in order. So, the first election we will hold, and I remember the last meeting, Jerry was talking to us about how he got involved in a little bit of elections with the Northern Middlesex Area Commission, on how elections should be held, and how they have to be open, they can't be single, I mean, a secret ballot, and I know Jerry's looking into that, and I think you've been appointed on that, haven't you, Jerry? So as that moves forward, maybe you can give us some more insight on that, but as we move on...
It's a secret, we still have Mark here.
Nothing unsecret of Mark. So, moving along this evening, the first election will be to elect a new chairperson for the next year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate yourself, Tom Linehan, the incumbent, for another term as chairperson.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And the next election will be for the vice chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with Attorney Joseph Claire Martin.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that, and I would like to add that we include in this title official maker of the motion. That's a joke.
So we do have Mr. Claire Martin at motion and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair vote, yes. So we have Mr. Claire Martin as the vice chair, the second vice chairperson, if we could?
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Member Richard Lockhart as second vice chair.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so Mr. Lockhart's appointed. Our representative for Northern Middlesex Council of Government.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that Mr. Frichetti, nominate for that.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair vote, yes. Our representative for our historic board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that Richard Lockhart to be nominated as our representative to the historic board.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair vote, yes. And our last one will be for our Green Building Commission.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to elect Steve Genrin to the Green Building Commission.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our election of officers. Moving along, we're coming back on the old businesses. Any general correspondents, as many board members, or if not, I'll start with Aaron first. Aaron, any particular correspondents? I didn't notice tonight, just in the paper, that we have the advertisement for dormitory use that's being advertised for the next meeting. I know we discussed it last time, but I did see it in tonight's paper, if you could start with that.
Yeah, that one's going forward to be on the planning board, and I did check for you, Jerry, they did not go to the zoning subcommittee, it's just completely wrong.
I appreciate you thinking.
For those times I'm happy to be wrong. Then the other matter, the master plan update for the Lowell General Hospital, has been pushed off a little bit. They needed to supply us with some more plans to, they had lots of plans, a lot of great 3D renderings, and to give us a sense of what was, they were proposing, but I know existing conditions, and I'm not very familiar, and I didn't, you know, want to assume that every single one of you are completely familiar with LGH as it is now, so they needed to get some existing conditions in. So that probably will be on for the first meeting in November, through the second. And then, just as an update, dealing with a couple other matters, on the boot mill, I think it was the 130-foot of John Street project, it was the condos several years back, they've moved the parking, the temporary parking in the courtyard to the other side and made it angled, which was not, which was not was approved with the original site plan. So I'm working with Ed Barry, originally, they were looking at moving it back to where it was approved, which was parallel on the other side, but some owners would prefer to keep the additional parking spaces. So, he's in the process of drawing up a site plan to present to the board for an amendment. The key issue there will be whether or not the fire department will have access to the courtyard. So, I think that was it for now.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, I got a call last night from one of our city councilors, actually, who got a call from one of our faithful viewers, who complimented us on our meetings, but said that there was an issue when we have an applicant display charts over here, or blueprints, whenever they speak, they point to the chart and they completely block the blueprint from the camera. And the suggestion was that we use a pointer, rather than have individuals go up and point to the chart. So I'm wondering if the Department of Planning and Development could acquire a pointer that we could use at this meeting, so that we make sure that the viewers can see what's going on on the charts.
Yeah, I can, there must be, probably not.
About $1.99.
I'll take one together with straws.
The big home one that says Patria, Patriots on it?
TPD.
I'll ask around.
If not, we just get a stick from outside or something.
Yeah, so the one that puts the red dot on it?
That's high tech, I was thinking just a stick, you know, a regular pointer, a laser pointer would be fine, too. Just so that the applicant doesn't have to block the view from the camera.
Do you think the location we have is okay when we put it there? Or is there some, the way the camera's set up, do you think, is it okay there?
The suggestion was specifically for a pointer, because...
About the LTC, you can pick it up, the audience can see it, we can see it.
I think LTC recommended this location for us, right, because it's something they could pick up on the camera, but...
It should be oriented, right, so that, like, tonight, I mean, you can see.
Yeah, it's not a great setup for a public meeting, you know, because people can't see it, but we do it.
It's more for discussion than it is for actually showing.
But it's the only room we have that has cameras, so the people can watch at home, so we have to do it.
I mean, like you say, for a council meeting, it's more of a dialogue, we're here, we're looking at more precise type of plans, where a lot of the viewers do lose it. That's why, when you start discussion over here, if you don't bring them up to the mics, I know if you ever watched the reruns, they try to pick up on the issue that we missed, and you look at it, you can see that that dialogue's not getting picked up. That's why I say, can you please come up, so people say what they say, and then we comment on it. I know we can all hear it in here, but if you do pick it up on the tape review, you do notice that that dialogue is being missed, and, like, when the moment tonight, try to turn and ask Mr. Daly certain questions, that's like what is sometimes it's on us, and we're just looking at, like, the day in the headlights, you know, like, so.
I'll put some perspective on that, Mr. Chairman, though, it is a lot better than the Arthur Hammer Meeting Room in the old planning department. That was not conducive, that was conducive for sitting around a table and reviewing something, but not for applicants.
We used to fill that, and people would be down the hall.
The reason for that was to keep the meeting shot.
This is an improvement.
Well, I mean, in that room, I mean, as you, I recall, is a table...
The table was bigger than the seating capacity.
Than the seating capacity, yes, right, yeah. Yeah, but, I mean, obviously here, we, you know, when we have a good-sized meeting and a good-sized discussion like this evening, this room...
Accommodates that, yes.
Even when we go across the halls in the mayor's reception hall, that's big enough for nice, you know, dialogue discussion, we don't have the cameras here, because we did even ask what it would cost to view if they had to put their communications in the other rooms, and the figure we got was fifty thousand dollars, so you're saying, you know, times like this, you know, we just move down the hall, which, obviously, as a board, we had no problems doing that, to accommodate it, but the question was if it came up, you know, would it, and the issue was just, you know, financially, it's better just to put us in here, which, I know the board member, it doesn't matter to me, I think, actually, you get comfortable at this location after a while, but it is bigger, and it's, like if they do, the hammer room was nice for small projects, I mean, that was nice when you put a plate on the table, people sat down and looked at it. I remember doing that a while ago, once we had a plan over here that we all turned, and people couldn't pick up on the plan, but when you have a public forum like this, or a public meeting, and, you know, it makes sense to have a wide-open televised, like I said, the old days over there, we really didn't have much telecommunication back then, so it kind of fit the purpose of the time, being like, as you know, when people would be in the hall, they wouldn't hear what one person said, like, tonight, and then the other person comes in and duplicates it, but this person would say, I agree with so-and-so, so this is more conducive...
We'd have to call in one by one, who's here for that, everyone else on the hall.
Yeah, Mr. Zabul said to go to the chair, go on, and yell, anybody here for this project? Well, but, yeah, so, yeah, if we could look into the pointer right there, though.
Yeah, and I gotta believe we can find something, if we can't, maybe I could work with LTC and, you know, put an X like they did on the Carson Show, make sure that whoever's pointing at it's pointing, you know, there's got to be a way to deal with it.
I think just one of those expandable pointers is probably fine, you know?
Oh, yeah, I know what you mean, yeah, they're like, you just pull them out.
Yeah, just like a...
In olden texts with that.
Since we're on logistics, I had mentioned to Aaron before that Jerry and I were wondering if he could move over there and sit at that, on one of those desks, because it's really hard for us to see and hear him all the way down the end of the, the end of the hallway there, I constantly feel like I'm craning my neck to look at you, Aaron.
To confirm, I do concur with my colleague here, it's...
That's not a problem, I just forget.
So maybe, you know, entering a new election cycle, and, you know, maybe starting...
So we can push him over here a little more, sure.
I just sit at the council desk here, you know, just so we can look at him.
Are we even, would that be, if he has enough room there, if not, push that table forward and put him on the end, like, down that way?
Whatever, just so we can get a...
Yeah, I can move this around, it's not a problem.
It's a nice, easy table.
Exercise again.
Any further discussion? No? Here and then, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move in second.
Motion made in second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, good night, and thank you, everyone.